Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll start with an invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and your wisdom, Lord, as we begin this public meeting. We ask that you help us to engage in meaningful discussion and conversation. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the citizens of our community. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Rested sisters and friends of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation by the Boys and Girls Club Scholarship recipients.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today we want to present and we want to honor our scholarship recipients from 2017-2018 school year. It's been a great year for a lot of our students. We went to their award ceremonies at their school and many of them have accomplished so many, so many things in high school that were honored with so many scholarships. And part of those scholarships, we were involved with them from the Boys and Girls Club. So today we want to honor our students that have been through the Boys and Girls Club. They were previous members as they were younger. They played through the sports, perhaps they were in the after-school programs. And today we want to honor them. We have eighteen of them out of our twenty recipients. Eighteen were able to make it tonight, so we're, we're grateful for that. So I'm gonna go ahead and start with our first one from Mission Veterans. And I'm gonna ask the students, as I call their names, if they can come forward so we can give them their scholarship. We have Brandon Casares, Nyla Vela, and Carlos Quintanilla from Mission Veterans. From Mission High School, we have Alyssa Garza, Yulisa Alvarez, Kenya Salinas, and Sebastian Carrillo. From Sherland High School, we have Caleb Hosenfluck, Brandon McCormick, Mary Townsend, Claudia Martinez, and Erwin Van Major. From Sherland Pioneer, we got Brittany Landavazlo, Nicole Cuellar, and Nicole Bagwell. And from idea public schools, we got Marcus Cadenha, Yareli Vela, Carlos Moreno, and Kayla Como. And I present to you today the 2017-2018 Boys and Girls Club Mission Scholarship recipients. So give them a big, big hand. If we can have our students take a picture with...
You want us to go down there or do we come up here?
I think that would be the best thing to do. There's eighteen of them.
We'll go ahead and go down there, Juan, and we want to do, take the time to thank yourself, your staff, and all the board members from the Boys and Girls Club that take the opportunity to raise funds throughout the school year to make sure that we have enough funds to, you know, make the scholarships happen and, and hopefully make some dreams come true for these students who are gonna be participating in different colleges. And we wish them all the best in their endeavors, especially in their career that they're gonna choose. Thank you all. Sorry, didn't mean to hit you. Okay. You guys could be this way. Here, come forward. Step forward. You guys. Come forward. Come forward. Come forward. Everybody over here, and three, two, one, smile. One more. And three, two, one. Before the parents step out, if we can just have all the parents, please stand up and be recognized. I know that it takes a lot of time and effort to take all the kids to the practices, to the games, and be able to participate all these years. So thank you for supporting the Boys and Girls Club.
And Mayor and Council, I also have a, tomorrow night we have another award ceremony. This is from the current Boys and Girls Club based on softball kids. And we're gonna be doing it at the Mission Event Center. We have over eight hundred kids that will be there with their parents, so you're more than welcome to come in. It's tomorrow night at seven PM at the Mission Event Center.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Item number three, presentation, proclamation on the Sherland Water Supply Corporation on the fiftieth anniversary.
Yes, Mayor, Council, I'd like to introduce Mr. Javier Ramírez, Assistant General Manager for Sherland Water Supply, who is here with us today to receive the proclamation which reads as follows. "Hurors, May 22nd, 2018 marked the fiftieth anniversary of Sherland Water Supply Corporation. Hurors, a group of determined, community-minded men founded the rural water system in 1968 with the help of the Farmers Home Administration. A loan was acquired to build the initial water system. Hurors, seven hundred property owners committed to take water service once construction was complete. Now, fifty years later, Sherland Water Supply Corporation has over eighteen thousand water service connections. Hurors, Sherland Water Supply Corporation has approximately one hundred square miles of certified service area and has approximately one thousand miles of water lines and three water plants with a capacity of twenty-two million gallons per day. Hurors, Sherland Water Supply Corporation is one of the largest water supply corporations in the state of Texas. And Hurors Sherland Water Supply Corporation has provided indispensable drinking water to residents of the city of Mission and is determined through hard work and commitment to continue to be an essential partner of our community. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby recognize Sherland Water Supply Corporation in appreciation for the service it provides to our citizens and urge all citizens to join with us in celebrating Sherland Water Supplies Corporation's fiftieth anniversary, proclaimed this twenty-ninth day of May, 2018."
We have a motion to approve the...
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Proclamation, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mr. Ramírez.
We also like to recognize and see if you can get your board to recognize Mr. Rudy López, who served almost the same time, fifty years. If we can do a proclamation here on our behalf.
Yes, sir.
And give us all the information, because he did serve from the day it was nineteen sixty-eight to about, when he died, about two, three years ago.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So if we can do, we have some information, so we can do a resolution also.
I will work on that.
Because we, we like to recognize him as one of the founders. Thank you.
Do we need to move that way?
Yeah. The proclamation, please. So I can see if you can open it up.
On the other side of the mayor's.
Hi, sir, how are you?
Okay, everybody look over here. And three, two, one. Three, two, one. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
The report for the legislature's chamber, please.
Yes, Mayor, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. In terms of recent events, on May eighteenth, we hosted a Coffee Connections at the Loretto. Overall, we had twenty-seven people in attendance. Also, on May eighteenth, we hosted a Facebook Ads Workshop in Spanish at the Chamber of Commerce, and overall, we had eleven people in attendance. On April, on May twenty-fourth, we offered a tour of DHR to our members at their request, and overall, we had sixteen people join us on this tour. And then our last of our recent events is on May twenty-fourth, we hosted a Business Mixer at Hawthorne Suites, and overall, we had fifty-seven people join us at our mixer. In terms of ribbon cuttings, on May sixteenth, we hosted a ribbon cutting for Cecile's Boutique. Overall, we had thirty-five people in attendance. And then on May twenty-third, we hosted a ribbon cutting for Mission Valley Nursing and Transitional Care, and overall, we had approximately about three hundred and fifty people in attendance. In terms of upcoming events, at the moment, we only have one upcoming event for this summer, which is our community barbecue event, and that'll be held on Saturday, July twenty-first. Any questions?
Any questions for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. We have a department report, so they're in your packet. If you all have any questions to the report, don't hesitate to ask before we do approve them.
I move for approval as presented, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the reports as presented? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Students' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Anybody from the audience that would like to address the council on any issues? Okay. Thank you. We'll go into public hearings, and we'll go on to our first one, which is 1.1A. Mr. Acevedo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, designating the honorary naming of Specialist Alex D. Gonzalez Street. This is on Barbara Street from Inspiration Road to Judy Street. This is a city-initiated project, and if the council is inclined to approve this resolution, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. The resolution reads as follows. "Whereas Specialist Alex D. Gonzalez was born January twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-seven in McAllen, Texas, and whereas he was adopted and raised by his biological uncle and grew up in a combined family, the only boy in a house of girls, he was full of life and joy. And whereas, whereas Alex graduated from Mission High School in 2005, where he played football and baseball, and then joined the Army, he was assigned to Fort Hood, Texas in the Forty-Third Combat Engineering Company, the Third Armored Cavalry Regiment. And whereas Alex dreamed of being a soldier since childhood, wanting to follow in the footsteps of his dad, who had once been an Army paratrooper, Alex was very proud to be serving and protecting his country. And whereas in April 2008, he was injured in Iraq and spent two weeks in a hospital with a hairline fracture on one of his ribs and injured, and an injury to a leg, he earned, which earned him a Purple Heart. And whereas he frequently volunteered for dangerous missions, saying that if he did not, one of his fellows would have to. After his four years in the military, Alex wanted to become a Mission Police Officer. And whereas Alex died May sixth, 2008, in Mosul, Iraq, of wounds suffered when his vehicle encountered small arms fire and a rocket-propelled grenade attack. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Mission hereby designate Barbara Street from Inspiration Road to Judy Street to be named Specialist Alex D. Gonzalez Street. Read, considered, and approved on this twenty-ninth day of May, 2018." There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting on this item. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and city manager recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
We need a motion to go ahead and approve Resolution 550.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 550. And it is a public hearing. Is anybody in favor or against this request? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We're gonna ask to see if we can do something about the grass in the park. Can somebody do something about the grass?
Yes, sir, we'll take care of that. I know Mr. Brad Benson is here with us in the meeting, but we'll take care of that.
Are you working on it? I know it's hard, but I know we need some green grass all over the field, so we could make it nice and pretty for Alex. Thank you. Item B.
Mayor, we do have, we do have the family members here. We'd like to see, maybe you'd like to take a picture with the council and be recognized?
Or if they'd like to say something?
Or you can say your words as well.
Let's go ahead and take a picture with the council. Can you raise the...
Okay.
I'm gonna be your photographer today, Missy. Ready? One, two, three. And... One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
I'm just taking the pictures.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for the conditional use permit to have a guest house at 2014 West Forty-Second Street, being Lot 58 of Torres Estates, Number Nine subdivision, phase two. Property is owned R1, and the applicant is Reymundo Rodriguez. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May ninth, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. Guest houses or separate servant quarters are allowed in a single-family residential zone through the use of a conditional use permit, as long as the structure has no separate water or other utility meters. They are required to have the same meters that the house has. If approved, the applicant is proposing to construct a swimming pool and a one thousand eight, eighty-six square foot guest house on Lot 58. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life of use, subject to no separate utility or electrical meters, and that the property not be used for rental purposes. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? The recommendation is to go ahead and approve ordinance 4635 and also approve the conditional use permit. So we do need a motion to approve our ordinance.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4635. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and on-site consumption of alcoholic beverages at Tacovice. The address is 205 North Cherry Road, Suite A, being Lot One of South Cherry Commercial subdivision. The property is owned C3. The applicant is PCS Cherry Investments LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May ninth, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. It is noted that the applicant is proposing to have a bar component in the restaurant, which requires a waiver of the three hundred foot to the nearest residence. There is an old mobile home park within three hundred feet, so a waiver of the three hundred foot separation is gonna be required. The hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Total of twenty-five employees will man the operation, and parking and landscaping do meet the city codes. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a two-year approval, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. We're also asking that they let zone the property, and we're asking for a waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement to the nearest residence. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
You want a two, you want the two ordinances, 4636 and 4637?
Yes, sir.
That's correct, sir.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve both ordinances, 4636 and 4637.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve both ordinances? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item D.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the executive drive-through convenience store. This is at 1710 West Business Highway 83, being a one-acre tract out of Lot 20-1, West Edition and Sherland subdivision. The property is owned C3, General Commercial, and the applicant is Florentino Vasquez Jr. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May ninth, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Magdalena Street and West Forty-Second Street. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Schubach Road and Business Highway 83. There have been several different CUP approvals for this drive-through window in the past. The most recent one came in 2015. However, the drive-through window had been inactive for quite some time now. Mr. Alaman is the newest operator at this location, and he wants the, the use of the drive-through window to be reactivated. The days and hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and a total of three employees will man the operation. Parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for one year to assess this new business. We're also asking that they comply with all building, fire, and health codes, and that they acquire a business license for the new business. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1F is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? This is a one-year permit?
Yes, it's a new business, so we're just giving them a permit for one year.
Ordinance is 4640. We do need a motion to approve both the conditional use permit and the ordinance. We do have a motion and a second. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item G.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a home occupation. This is for a photography studio at 2,002 North Mayberry Road. This is 155 times 220-foot tract of land out of the southwest quarter of Lot 24-9, West Edition and Sherland subdivision. The property's owned AOI, and Arturo and Mandy Navarro are the applicants. And if the council's inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 23, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Mayberry Road and Volt Lane. The applicant wishes to renew his conditional use permit, and he uses the property for professional photographers to go take pictures of their clients. He has both outdoor sceneries that can be used for special events, such as weddings, quinceañeras, and anniversaries. And this CUP was originally approved in 2013, and most recently in April 11 of 2015, at which time we approved it for three years. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment only, and Mr. and Mrs. Navarro's run the home occupation. Parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for life of use. Staff and city manager are also recommending approval for life of use. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1G is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the ordinance is 4641, and we do need a motion to approve the conditional use permit. Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item H.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1H is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to keep a 12-by-25 portable building for office use. This is for Rio Grande Valley Logistics. The address is 1501 Industrial Way, being Lot 3 of Mission Park subdivision. The property's owned Light Industrial I-1, and the applicant is Roel Ruiz. And if the council's inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 23, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Los Ebonos Road and Industrial Way. The applicant has constructed a 12-by-25 building on block pairs that he uses as his office for a building materials exporting business. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and two people manned this operation. Parking and landscaping meet code. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission did require that Mr. Ruiz install a light in the parking area. There's enough parking for like four vehicles in the front of the building. It's got some nice landscaping, but the PNC recommended that they install some type of parking light. Mr. Roel Ruiz was receptive, and we'll be working with him to make sure that that light gets installed. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and our city manager are also recommending approval for a period of three years. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1H is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Yes, there's some issues. I see no ramp for ADA, so it needs to be considered because there is a person with special disability or problem, how we're going to handle it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody else? If not, the recommendation from planning and zoning and from my staff is to approve ordinance 4642 and the conditional use permit. So that's the recommendation.
Can I just check real quick? Were the ADA requirements reviewed?
This is a site-built building. We'd have to check with the applicant to see if he got clearance through the ADA.
Can I make a motion to approve it in accordance to the ADA regulations?
Sure. We can include that as part of the...
I would like to put that into a formal motion, Mayor.
What's your motion?
To approve it as is, but in accordance to the ADA regulations of the ramp.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve it as is, accord... To be able to get appro... I mean, subject to ADA regulations, right?
Yes.
And the ordinance is 4642. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Thank you. Item 2.1. Disposition of minutes. We have item 2.1. Ms. Carrillo? City Council Special Regular Meeting, April 23.
I move for approval.
Second.
We do have a meeting on April 23. A special meeting. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Aquí te vas o te pierdas, el 23. Okay, item 3.2. No, vamos los dos a la hora. Item 3.0 is to acknowledge the minutes that we have. Mission Historical Museum on March 19 of 2018 and April 16 of 2018. Spur Memorial Library had one on April 17, and Zoning Board of Adjustment had one on April 18. And that's it. We do need a motion to approve all the minutes.
I move to... Second, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second to approve all this minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. We do come on to item 4.1, preliminary plat approval.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 4.1 is a preliminary plat approval of 6 Western Vega subdivision. This is a 20-acre tract of land out of the south, 724 feet of the west, 1,452 feet of the south, 67.33 acres of the west, 127.33 acres of the south, 175.39 acres lying west. Idalo County Control and Improvements District Number 6 Canal, out of Block 16, Texas Gardens subdivision. This is in a rural ETJ. The developer's Texas Ranch LLC, and the engineer's Quintanilla Hedley and Associates. Mayor Council, what we have here is a 12-lot, single-family residential subdivision. This is located along the east side of Western Road and along the north side of 6 Mile Road. All of the lots are between 1.5 acres and 2 acres. The water CCN belongs to Awasud, and the developer's proposing to connect... For water services to connect to an existing 8-inch water line along the east side of Western Road and another 8-inch water line that runs along the north side of 6 Mile North Road. Sanitary sewer services will be addressed through individual onsite sewage facilities. Staff and city manager are recommending approval. Item 4.1 is now before you.
These are long, one and a half acres, right?
Yeah, these are very long lots. They're exceeding the half-acre requirements for sewage.
Mr. Quintanilla in? Mr. Quintanilla, the engineer?
I got a call from his engineer, Lalo, who said he wasn't going to be able to attend the meeting today. So I don't think anybody's here from Quintanilla's office.
And do we look at the drainage outfall or no?
Yes. One of the things that we considered was during the PNC was the drainage.
Where she's going to drain, to which canal?
It says the drainage for the subdivision is proposed by recreating the roadside ditch along the east side of Western Road and the north side of Mile 6 Road. The roadside ditch along the east side of Western Road flows southerly, and the roadside ditch along north side of Mile 6 Road flows westerly. There is an existing 18-inch culvert across Mile 6 Road, and he's just going to be using bar ditches.
How far is the ditch from? He doesn't have a ditch close by?
He doesn't have... No.
So how can they approve a subdivision without a drainage?
Does he... Has he gotten approval by... For the county?
There is a... There is a drainage report that was submitted with this plat. However, the county drainage district is taking quite some time to get these drainage reports approved. So at this time, we don't have an approved drainage report. It's just a...
So the drainage has not been approved yet?
The Drainage District has not given a final approval on...
Well, I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and wait till we get a drainage report.
That would... I would... Yes, I recommend that we table the item until we get a drainage report.
Okay, we can let them know.
And I don't have any problems them not having a drainage ditch, but their requirement is to have a closed drainage ditch by, which I think it's a... A regional, but that's what the rules are, and this one doesn't have one. So let's wait and see if we can get a drainage report.
That's fine, Mayor.
And if they have changed the rules, that's fine. We'll approve it. But if they haven't changed the rules, then we're going to have to wait and see when they get a drainage report. Okay, so we don't even have a motion to table it?
Just to make something clear, you do... You don't record this plat until you make sure that the county has approved the drainage report, right?
That's correct. We don't take anything until the county drainage district approves it.
Exactly.
But given the concerns, I'm okay with tabling the item.
Don't do anything with it. Okay.
That would be my motion, Mayor.
Second.
Excuse me. Will we be ready for the next meeting? Because it'll be...
The motion is to go ahead and table it?
Take no action, Mayor.
Take no action on it, okay? And we go on to item 4.2?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4.2 is a preliminary plat approval for Deloro subdivision, Unit Number 4. This is a resubdivision of 11.037 acres out of land of the south end, Portion 52. This is in the... In the Mr. Rhodes Development PUD, and the applicant is Rhodes Enterprises, Inc. The engineers, Melden and Hunt. This is located approximately 3/4 of a mile east of Schubach Road on 1 mile south. This is Phase 4 of Deloro subdivision. The applicant is proposing 58 single-family lots with an average square footage of 6,000 square feet. We're recommending that they dedicate the water rights, and in reviewing the water and sewer, their proposal does meet city codes. They're basically tying into what's already in existence in the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. Staff and city manager are also recommending approval.
The recommendation from planning and zoning is to approve, and the staff is also recommending approval, so we don't need a motion to approve the plat, preliminary plat.
So moved, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve a preliminary plat on Deloro subdivision, Number 4. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.3.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 4.3 is a preliminary plat approval of Retama Village, Phase 4 subdivision. This is a resubdivision of 7.659 acres out of Lot 14, Del Monte Irrigation Company subdivision. This is a planned unit development. The developers, Rhodes Enterprises, Inc., and the engineers, Melden and Hunt. This is located near the southeast corner of Military and Benson Palm Drive. This is a continuation of the Retama Village, which is near the Birding Center area. The applicant is proposing 23 single-family residential lots, 11 cottage lots, which are the smaller ones, and then also two common areas. The proposed water and sewer services have been reviewed and will be meeting city codes. We're asking that they dedicate the water rights, and our Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this preliminary plat. Staff and city manager are also recommending approval.
I have a question. What is a cottage lot?
The cottage lots are like little drive-up lots. They're just smaller in size. They...
4,300 square feet.
What do you do on a cottage lot?
It's like a little mobile home or a little bus with a big... With a big garage.
Right. It's like a little small mobile home, but it has like an oversized canopy, carport for their RVs.
And so Jaime, this is like a Phase 2, Phase 3. We already have an existing cottage lot subdivision?
There's existing cottages already in place. I guess people live either inside of their RVs and have a little area.
Okay.
They're pretty expensive, let me tell you. About $200,000.
I've seen them, but I just don't know if that was...
Right by the Benson Park.
He's got a new development that's going to be coming in the next couple of weeks, where he's going to be offering one-bedroom homes, two-bedroom homes, and three-bedroom homes, between 800 square feet and 1,600 square feet. That's going to go all the way to Schubach. It'll be the next phase of this project.
Yes.
It's a nice development.
Nice.
I move for approval.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat for Retama Village. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.4.
Yes, Mayor Council. We're asking for authorization to reschedule the June 11, 2018 city council meeting to June 18 of 2018. The earliest date to canvass the election of the June 9 is Monday, June 18, and so this will avoid the necessity of calling a special meeting. Mayor Council, what we would do is basically what we did in May, we'll have... We would have the canvassing at like 3:30 and then have the meeting, the council meeting at 4:30. So that's right, you know, and this will avoid to have three meetings on, you know, the 11th, and the 18th, and then the 25th.
Why are we changing the meetings? I didn't hear you.
It's in order to canvass, sir, because we would not... The election date is on Saturday. Our meeting is on June 11.
Oh, instead of...
So it would... That way it eliminates having an extra meeting. I don't know if you recall, what we used to do is we used to cancel the meeting, and now we're just asking to reschedule. And that way we canvass at 3:30 on the 18th, and then we have our regular meeting, and we don't have three Monday meetings back-to-back. You know, that's the council wishes.
Okay, we need a motion to go ahead and authorize to reschedule the June 11, 2018 city council meeting to June 18.
So moved. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Mr. Benson.
Sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Having for you item 4.5 is authorization to purchase ornamental street lighting via state-approved by-board contract. We're seeking authorization to purchase ornamental street lighting to be used for Leopenea Placeta Park from dealers' electric supply of Mac Allen via state-approved by-board contract number 501-15. The purchase price for these 20 ornamental light fixtures and poles is $46,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 4.6.
4.6 is approval to rescind authorization to solicit bids for Bobcat compact track loader and authorize the purchase through state-approved by-board contract number 515-16. This is for the purchase of one diesel Bobcat compact track loader plus auxiliary hydraulic attachments from Bobcat of the Royal Grandy Valley via by... Via by-board contract 515-16. Cost of this unit is $81,735 plus 0.76. Staff and city manager recommend this approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve?
So moved.
The authorization? We have a motion and a second, not to exceed $81,000.
Well, actually, we added one more unit for the cemeteries, and the cost of that unit is $3,591.76. So we're bringing the total to $81,735.
So you're not asking for one, are you asking for two?
Well, no, it's an attachment. It's like a... Like a miniature dump truck. Bucket attachment.
So it's going to go over $81,000?
Yes, sir.
Can you repeat the proper amount?
Yes, sir. The... The cost of the Bobcat unit plus the attachments that the Parks Department is seeking is $78,144, plus the attachment to use in the cemeteries is $3,591.71. So the total between the two is $81,735,000. $81,735.
$81,700, okay. The cost would be not to exceed $81,000, or $82,000.
$82,000.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 4.7.
Item 4.7 is authorization to solicit bids for palm tree trimming for city-owned properties to include parks, city facilities, and rights of ways. Services are to include supervision, labor, materials, and supplies. Staff and city manager recommend your approval.
Okay, let's go ahead. Need a motion to go ahead and authorize to solicit bids for palm tree trimming.
I mark your approval.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.8.
4.8 is authorization to award bid for pylon sign replacement. We received five bid responses. Parks is seeking to award to Golden World Signs LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. The bid amount of the sign replacement is $31,614.69. Staff and city manager recommend your approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approv, approve the bid of thirty-one thousand, six hundred and fourteen, sixty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four point nine?
Item four point nine is to amend the lease agreement between the City of Mission and the Children's Advocacy Center for the rental Strickland Building. We're seeking an extension to, the lease agreement is being requested from three years to five years, beginning on January one, two thousand seventeen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, for a rental amount of one dollar a year. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So moved, Mayor.
We do, we do have a motion and a second to go ahead and extend the lease for five years. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, four ten? Mr. Rosal?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item four point ten. Approval of supplemental work for work authorization number twenty-five with L N G engineering related to the Madero International Bridge connecting roadways. Supplemental work authorization entails professional services for the Madero International Bridge connecting roadways. These services for traffic projection on Inspiration Road, Military Parkway, two A and two B. Estimated cost of work authorization is one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the supplement work?
Move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four eleven?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item four point eleven, approval of resolution number one five five one, establishing a commitment to participate in a Texas Department of Transportation construction project known as Taylor Road from Business eighty-three to I two, also known as U, US eighty-three, and authorizing the mayor to execute local transportation project advance funding agreement. And Mr. Mayor, we have a Mr. Belmaris Sammy with L N G to give a presentation on the project.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Council members.
I'm just here to, to answer any questions you all might have, but just on the big picture on the Taylor Road, due to the effort of the City of Mission, the mayor, Mr. Martin Garza, City of Mission has been able to secure over fifteen million dollars to build Taylor Road. And there's been a great partnership, you know, local agreements has been signed between City of Mission, City of McAllen, and also two precincts of the county, precinct two, precinct three. Everybody has pitched in. The project has received, of course, they, there were two projects. One is from Expressway to Business eighty-three, and then the other one is from Business eighty-three north to Mall Two. And what this project will do, it turns the two-lane road into a five-lane curb and gutter with full drainage at a cost of over fifteen million dollars. What is, uh, before you is the advanced funding agreement with Texta, so all those federal funds can be reimbursed to the city for the acquisition of right-of-way as well as the construction. Uh, where we are, the project has received environmental clearance already, which is a big step on the project. Design is almost complete, right-of-way map is almost complete, and now that this agreement is here, that means that the City of Mission can start buying the land and then requesting reimbursement from Texta. We can start purchasing right-of-way from Expressway to, to Business. For now. Yes, sir. But the whole project has been approved all the way to Toomail Line. That's correct. The amount of fifteen million. Yes, sir, that's correct. Okay, that's very good news. And then, of course, the, our cost is gonna be about twenty-eight cents, twenty-eight cents? Twenty-eight cents, but it's been divided between City of Mission, McAllen, and the counties, so it's about ten cents on the dollar for Mission. It's gonna be about nine cents for, for nine percent for every, every entity. Yes, sir. So when can you all start, or when can we start buying right-of-way? We should be able to start approaching the property owners within about two to three months, and within four months, they should receive appraisals of their property. Of course, the project is being done with federal rules under Title II and the Three of the Uniform Act, but within four months, I would expect the property owners to receive appraisals of their land.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Very good news, and we need to appreciate the work that has entered us with Texta.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. So the resolution is fifteen fifty-one, and we do need a motion to approve that resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve resolution fifteen fifty-one. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. So this is our very good news from, from, from our engineering firm, and it's gonna be nice to have that road widened all the way down to Toomail Line. Four point twelve?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item four point twelve, approval of work authorization number thirteen, and final payment to Javier Nogosa Engineering related to the Leo Peña Placita Park renovations. Professional services for the surveying and site improvements plans and specifications for Leo Peña Placita Park were performed. Total cost of work performed is sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
This is where we are, Mr. Nogosa?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
I move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the payment of sixteen thousand, eight fifty to Mr. Nogosa. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four thirteen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item four point thirteen, approval of work authorization number twelve with Melden and Hunt to provide fire protection to Basham subdivision six and seven. Professional services for plants and specifications outlining a looped water connection with fire hydrants to provide fire protection to Basham subdivision number six and seven. Project will also consist of providing drainage improvements for these subdivisions. Estimated cost of work authorization is eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the, the cost of eighty-four thousand, nine sixty-eight? So we do need a motion to approve that.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Bella, item four, one four, the tax collection report?
Yes, good afternoon. Item four point fourteen is the acceptance of the monthly property tax report for the month of April, two thousand eighteen. The twenty-seventeen total adjusted tax levy was twenty million, fifty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-two cents, and the amount of collections as of April thirtieth, twenty eighteen is eighteen million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents, which represents ninety-three point ninety-nine percent of the tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Need a motion to approve the report?
I want to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the report. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four fifteen?
Four fifteen is the approval of the April, twenty eighteen, financial statements. The beginning fund balance was twenty-two million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Total revenues for the month were nine million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars, and total expenditures were ten million, forty-one thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars, leaving an ending adjusting fund balance of twenty-two million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve the financial statement?
I want to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Belmaris?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I bring before you item four point sixteen, third amendment to interlocal agreement between City of Mission and the Royal Grandy Valley Development Council for transit-oriented development project, downtown Placita project. The purpose of this amendment is to extend the deadline for the interlocal from June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, to December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So, so we are going to extend the interlocal?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we need a motion to do that?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to go ahead and extend an amendment to the interlocal agreement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Dominguez? Resolution number?
Fifteen fifty-two.
Fifteen fifty-two.
Mayor, City Council, item four point seventeen is the approval of a resolution for the twenty-seventeen Operation Stone Garden Grant Program from the Office of the Governor for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Grant number three one seven two nine zero three. The total amount of the grant is two hundred and fifty thousand. A hundred thousand will be used for overtime funds, and a hundred and fifty thousand will be provided for a new Sky Wash Tower. The grant will be in effect from September first, twenty eighteen, through August thirty-first of twenty nineteen. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Resolution one, five five two?
I move for approval.
We have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item four eighteen, Mayor, is the approval of a resolution authorizing the Mission Police Department to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of State Right-of-Way to the Texas Department of Transportation for the inner-city bike ride for Hope. The bike ride will be commenced on four ninety-fourth, which is Sherry Road, and FM ten sixteen, traveling westbound on the right lane to travel towards State Highway one oh seven and continue to Business eighty-three. Then they'll be turning right onto Business eighty-three, going eastbound and into the City of McAllen. The event is scheduled for June the tenth, from eight to twelve noon. Staff and city manager are, recommend approval for this project.
Um, we do need a motion to go ahead and approve resolution fifteen fifty-three.
So moved. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four nineteen?
Four nineteen, Mayor, City Council, is authorization to purchase a seamless security video wall projecting screen with a D I R contract number T S O three five three seven. This equipment will allow the Mission Police Department to create a security video wall projecting screen located within the telecommunications center to monitor video footage from different security cameras located within the interior and exterior areas of our building. This technology will allow our telecommunications to easily monitor areas of most importance, such as the front lobby, where our citizens are attended to. The total cost of the project is forty-four thousand, two hundred and ten fifty-two, which will be funded through the federal drug forfeiture account. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need a motion, go ahead and approve, approve the purchase of forty-four thousand?
So moved, Mayor.
Two hundred and ten fifty-two. We do have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Four twenty? Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. I come before you seeking authorization to enter into a reclaimed water use agreement with Simran Country Club. The City of Mission is currently working on the wastewater treatment plant expansion, and a component of the expansion is to have the capability to reuse water effluent of the wastewater treatment plant for irrigation purposes. Simran Country Club requested service and has agreed to pay a minimal annual charge for its share of costs for the construction, as well as for the water delivered under this agreement. The city shall charge Simran Country Club a minimum annual payment of fifty-four thousand dollars to be made in twelve equal monthly payments of forty-five hundred dollars on the first day of each month. The city shall begin to deliver reclaimed water within a hundred and twenty days after the effective date of the agreement or when Simran is capable, capable of receiving the reclaimed water. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So you want us to approve what?
The agreement with Simran Country Club. Is there a reclaimed water use agreement with the Simran Country Club?
Okay, and...
I move for approval, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second, and then my question is, it's fifty-four thousand dollars to be made in twelve equal monthly payments of forty-five hundred dollars a month?
Yes, sir.
What happens after that?
After that, there's a, there's a rate. If they wanna use more than five hundred, uh, five hundred thousand gallons per day, there's an additional charge if they wanna use over the, the amount fixed per the contract that we have.
And Mayor, just for, um, I, I helped prepare that agreement, Mayor, and originally there was an allotment set, but on the, on the revised agreement, there is no allotment set, so the minimum charge, the charge is gonna be forty-five hundred dollars per month for the remainder of the agreement.
How many, how many gallons, or?
There, there is no allotment. There's no water allotment.
Lo que sale, que se va, Mayor.
Yes.
It's a monthly payment?
It's a monthly payment, correct.
But no amount of water, I mean?
No.
They can take all the water they want to?
As much as they need for irrigation purposes.
You think it's a good deal?
With, we don't, based on the numbers that were being sent to us, we don't anticipate them using more than...
I don't know.
And this is only for one year, though, right?
No, they want it all the time.
This, this is a long-term agreement.
A long-term agreement?
How long is the agreement for?
I wanna say it's twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years? That's the, that's the agreement.
Twenty-five years for forty-five hundred dollars a month? And the cost of the whole thing is not here, so I'd like to see, how much is it gonna cost us? How much is it gonna cost us to do the project, us, the city up front?
The city up front is gonna run us, uh, the, well, the engineering portion, right now, Melden Hunt is working on the acquisition of the properties.
How much is it gonna cost us for the line and the hope to be able to?
To do that, sir.
To carry the water all the way down from where they want us to, to, to their lake or wherever?
Mayor Randy Fides has been in contact with Melden and Hunt. There are the engineers who are running this project, and he'll have a report.
Yeah, Mayor, the, the total project is, is two million dollars, but we're also running a line to our Benson State Park that will do irrigation over there, but it's a six hundred thousand for Simran.
Okay, so we have to invest six hundred thousand?
That's correct.
To be able to take care of them?
Yes. That's the construction cost.
For, we have to... Yeah, I know, I know what it is, but, but, you know, and, and I was there with Martin when he was working the steel, but I've been thinking about it, that we're gonna come up, we're gonna spend six hundred thousand dollars of our general fund, and then it's gonna take us twenty-five years to collect it, right? Or whatever. Forty-five hundred dollars a month for twenty-five years is how much?
Well, it's gonna be, uh, the six hundred thousand, we're, we're, it's, it's a water development loan that we're using the funding, and so at fifty-four, at fifty-four thousand a year, you get, it's in about eighteen point five years, it, you get about a million dollars in, in eighteen and a half years.
And the loan rate is less than three percent?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
It's a low-interest loan from the Water Development Board that we acquired to do the project.[1635.41]
You're gonna get a loan?
It's already, it's already part of the wastewater treatment plant expansion project, so that's, that's already been, uh, done.
So you're gonna get the, the money for the country club from the Water Development Board?
That's part of the project, yes, sir.
But, but I don't think you can use that money from, from that, from money that we use for low-income housing, or in low-income development into a country club.
Well, it was, it was already...
Get it from the general fund.
It was already, uh, the, the way it was written to the Water Development Board, it was, uh, that's how it was, uh, part of the component of that project was...
The, the, the item...
What we borrowed was seventeen million. Fifteen million was a component of the actual expansion of the four point five M G D. Two million was aside for affluent water, and part of that is to build the infrastructure wherever we wanna send it and to whoever, several customers, and I wanna plug in, so as we're running for Simran, there's the, um, also the, um, industrial park, like road technologies.
Uh, uh, I know that, Martin, and I know that very well, but I hate for people, for later on, to come out and say that we're spending money that goes into the low-income areas that we get from the Water Development Board into a country club.
Uh, Mayor, I, I don't think that loan is under the IDAP, uh, loan system. The IDAP, uh, the Water Development Board?
Yes, sir.
Multiple loans.
The...
But anyway, if you, I would say that if you wouldn't spend money in the water, in the country club, you should get it from the, from the taxpayers, from the general fund.
Originally, originally, the, um, the language that was used to the Water Development Board was to use that recycling project of the reused water.
We're gonna get criticized for using monies to a country club. To be able to get the, the grass green because they can't get it green enough, so we're trying here to invest monies from our, from our city to be able to, to help them with their problem with the grass or their golfers. Uh, I mean, I, if that's what you all wanna do, that's fine, but use it from, from the general fund so people can know that you're getting it. I, I would say that monies that, that we borrow for, we should use it for people that deserve it. That we, I mean, here we are, spending money in a country club, instead of the country club paying for it themselves. I mean, this is not a, a, I don't know if you all understand me, but why should we be able, why should we spend money and give it to the country club and then take twenty years or twenty-five years to get it back? I just don't see a good deal for the city. I, I mean, why should we? They have a, I mean, they're supposed to have money, those people that live over there. And, and, um, if you all wanna do that, that's fine, but I, I don't think that I'm gonna be able to support this issue, that, uh, we're gonna be spending in, uh, a total amount of money in doing all this work and helping them do this. They should have enough money to be able to get our water for free, or they want to, but don't put us, don't get us in debt for it. We're gonna give you the water, but then on top of that, you want us to pay for the infrastructure, for the, for all the line. Okay, are we gonna charge them twenty percent interest or what? Nah, nah. You know, we're just gonna get six hundred thousand dollars and give it to them so they can, or we're in the, or, or we give it to, maybe E D C can pay for it. That's where it should come from. E D C, see if Alex is going to wanna do that, spend the six hundred dollars over there and don't get it from us. I think, do you all understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, Mayor, can we, can we table the item?
I think we should table it and find out if Alex wants to pay for it.
Okay.
Because that would come from a, from, from economic development program, and is, is to make some of those people rest a lot winner. And they've been there, uh, thirty-seven years. And now, at the end of thirty-seven years, they want us to give them six hundred thousand dollars, write them a check, and let's pay for it. And I know that, um, probably everybody says, why didn't you say this before? Because I've been thinking about it, and I've been trying to get myself, convince myself that it's the right thing to do, but I can't see that it's the right thing to do. I don't know, I mean, if you all think that way, that's fine, but I just don't, I can't get myself to say yes. Let's give them six hundred thousand dollars. Because I know some of our friends and some of our people that sit in this council is gonna criticize us tomorrow. The mayor spent six hundred thousand dollars in Simran. You know, he used to live there, and he's got all his friends over there, but I don't wanna give my friends all that money. I want, I want that on record, that I don't wanna give them any money. Maybe we can convince Alex to do it.
Okay.
And that's our influence water.
Yeah.
And then you're saying, ah, les vamos a poner la, la línea, y les vamos a dar todo el agua que quieran. Brilliant. Abrir la barbola. I don't agree with it. So I'm only recommending we table this, and you all sleep on it.
That would be my motion, Mayor.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, that we go ahead and put it on the burner for maybe another week or so, and we can convince Alex to go ahead and pay for it.
Mayor, if I could make a comment?
Huh?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Thank you. I think these type of, uh, scenarios is something that I would like to speak about in some type of meeting, so that we can all have a meeting of the minds to discuss different projects like this.
I know, I mean, this is very simple, you don't, you don't have to have a meeting for it.
Well, we've been planning, the city employees have been talking about this for a couple of months already.
Well, and, and, you know...
It's the first time that I hear about it.
Comumbe?
I'm being honest. So I would like to, maybe in the future?
Well, I would say, advise you to sit with Martin, and he can take, or you can sit with me, I can go ahead and tell you about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I'll buy you a cup of coffee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, the table is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Belmaris.
Yes, sir. Four twenty-one, authorization to solicit for competitive proposals for auditing of the city's hotel motel occupancy tax collections. The hotel motel tax is based on the rental rooms and other revenues generated by the hotels. The service will verify the amount of hotel motel tax being collected. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve?
Second.
Need a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.